Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the North Bend City Council meetings for April eighth, twenty twenty five, at seven P M. Here in the council chambers. I'd like to call our meeting to order and ask the North Bend Fire Department to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All right.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to those of you who are here in person tonight, for those of who are watching live on morning, and for anybody who's watching on later days, so welcome. I'll go ahead and ask our city recorder to help us with our roll call. Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Garbonde.
Here.
Eric Aulkey.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Slater.
Here.
Counselor Torres.
Here.
Nathan. All right. Well, this takes us to number three on our agenda tonight. It's our ceremonial items. I think our fire chief is here to go ahead and help us with some celebrations. So I'll ask you to come on forward.
This evening, we're here to put our give Michael Sarah his lieutenant badge. So Mike, you're gonna put there this evening. We'll just kind of have a spoiler alert here. There's gonna be a two-part event because once we get done putting his, giving it pending him, we're also gonna give him his twenty-year plaque this evening as well. Before we start this, though, Mike's been with us, obviously, for twenty years. He's done an awesome job with that, and he's stepping into lieutenant position. And one thing with Mike, when it's time to get something done, you ask him, get it done. His guys get behind him, and things happen. And he's a serious hard worker. He makes things happen. He understands the fire service. And it's really awesome to watch the guys work with Mike and Portland. It's really terrific. And that hard work, all that, that's great. But you know, another thing with Mike is we also see him go out on these medical calls where this little old lady's hurt. And believe it or not, Mike shows more compassion than most people we've seen. And that's another example that he sets as well. For some reason, he can really relate, and he can talk to these people that are in a bad position, and and it's just awesome to know that when you need to knock a tree down, knock the woods down, put out fires, he can do that. But when he has to back up and show that compassion, he does that by example as well to his people, and it's really fascinating, and it's great to watch. So what we'll do is we will put on his lieutenant badge this evening. And then after we're done with that, your wife Lisa, we'll get on instead. Stand here. I'm Michael Sarah.
I am Mike Lucero.
As a lieutenant with the city of North Bend.
As a lieutenant with the city of North Bend.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
I will faithfully, honestly, and ethically.
I will faithfully, honestly, and ethically.
Discharge the duties and mission of the city of North Bend.
Discharge the duties and mission of the city of North Bend.
And the North Bend Fire Department.
And the North Bend Fire Department.
I hereby commit to conduct myself in a manner.
I hereby commit myself to I hereby commit myself to conduct in a manner that will always uphold the public's faith and trust in me and in the department. So help me God.
I'm a very good listener. At the same time, we'll go ahead and give Mike this time his plaque. And it says, for twenty years of service presented to Michael Lucero, should say lieutenant Michael Lucero. With heartfelt appreciation, we extend our deepest gratitude for your commitment and invaluable contribution to the North Bend Fire Department and the city of North Bend. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyone say?
Sure. Couple of things. Just thanks, all my family and friends for coming tonight and sharing this with me. It means a lot. Thanks for the North Bend Fire Department, for the opportunity to leave in this role in the department, and for having the confidence in me to to take on this lieutenancy. Thank all the lieutenants that came before me for giving me a good blueprint of how to do their job and do it well. Special thanks to Brother John. He's been a long time lieutenant here. He's been instrumental in this department for showing us all how to do this job and do it well. Special thanks to Rick Cooper. This shouldn't even be anything. We had a fifteen-year partnership, and he showed me how a leader is supposed to be in the, in the fire service and just in life. He's been great. Most of all, I want to thank my wife Lisa and my children just for sharing me with the city and with the fire department. We missed a lot of events doing this job, and they've always been there and supported me, and it's been fantastic. So thank you. Thank you all. You know, when we go down, it just looks so, it's like I think last time, it had like the the younger folks, you know, you know, now they're not really close. You come on up, there's anybody else wants to take a photo before I do, go for it. And just get in there before I do. Okay, let's see if we can do that.
And if you push that up so the light doesn't reflect, so have it come. Yeah, there you go. All right, so we need to smoosh a little bit more like, yeah, there we go. Ralph, that's a little too much. That's, that's kind of awkward, like. There you go.
I'm yelling with these two other two.
You, you, you say it and shout it big. You believe it. All right, let me take about twenty real quick. Okay, you just want to do now the council, the family, the chairman, the this family first. Bill. Dang, we may end up having the same problem here.
It's almost better than the fire department.
Yeah. Is she in a photo before? All right, let's see. That's good. That's good. Okay, try this real fast before she starts crying, looking at me. I know that seems like a lot, but trust me, believe it or not, as quick as it does, someone blinks, and I actually have to look at every set of eyes. So I try not to have any blinks. All right, do I do counsel?
Carly. One with just my wife.
That's great. I mean, this is great. Twenty-five bucks a photo. I mean, I'm getting rich. And that won't be charged? You want to scoot a little this way. That way, the signs are in the middle behind you. Excellent. All right, ready? Here we go. All right, who's next?
Grab that camera before long, if you keep collecting minutes.
You know, the last, it's only broken twice. The most recent was with Stephanie Wilson. We were at the chamber event, and I don't know what colors that. All right. Just Counselor Slater. Yeah, okay, not too far. Don't push. All right, there you go.
That's right.
Exactly. All right, here goes. Call this lieutenant's here tonight. One.
Yes.
Two, yeah, you're all just with them.
Right, you got it.
Yeah, Mike. And then Luke.
Thank you.
I just gotta do a lieutenant for current.
He was lieutenant here for a long time.
All right, now I really charge it. How much can I get for this, Cooper? Not gonna throw out a figure, huh? I keep taking, it's five bucks a frame, so I keep going. Are you sure? Well, that's setting a record, so you're good. All right, ready? All right, is that everybody?
Um, jump back through the meeting in just a minute. We'll give them a minute if they want to. Just jump back through into the meeting. Just one more minute. As the actually the entire, the fire department is next, which we appreciate the service that they have for our community and longevity. They probably added up all the years of experience. I don't know if Chief Brown, what's your best guess? If you added up all the years of experience, everybody who's volunteered on the currently employed by the fire department and then volunteering for the fire department, we've got five people there, over ten, fifteen, twenty years, thirty years. So maybe looking at like thousands of years. Okay, that is your homework. Well, over five hundred, yeah, I would think so. It's great. And so that was what is, what I mean, um, we had a honor tonight of the squaring end of the fire lieutenant in twenty years of service to remind Lucero. So we'll go ahead now and turn it on to number four on the agenda. Is there a motion to the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second, first from Counselor Hamilton, a second from Counselor Schultz. Is there any discussion? Great. All in favor of accepting the consent if the calendar is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five is public comment. And would we have any public comment this evening? But as mentioned before, it's always welcome here. We're at our council meeting or at our work sessions. Number six on the agenda is our building codes fees, public hearing. All right, and so building code fees, public hearing. I do believe we also have our attorney, Mark Wolf, online here. And I will go ahead and just begin that. Well, I have some information in front of me, and there's some highlighted names on it, and the first name is Ralph. Okay, so now I, so I got thrown. Do I play the role of Ralph this evening? Okay. Um, so the public hearing on building code B increase for twenty twenty five, this is the time set for a public hearing on the building code B increase for twenty twenty five. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is a, the staff to read reports. So.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, as we discussed prior, this is our fee schedule that you already voted on. However, the building code agency requires it be published in their publication forty-five days prior to the hearing. So it's a two and a half percent increase across the board on all the fees. That affects about seventy items, if you actually looked in your packet at the list, but this is the time for anybody protesting those fees to make their thoughts known. Otherwise, again, this has already been approved by you. Any testimony that would make you change that would be heard at a different time, and we modify the resolution.
Well, thank you for the staff report. Now I will wait for the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and the staff. There is a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of building code, of the building code B increase for twenty twenty five? Hearing done. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing done. I will now close the public testimony portion of the hearing. If there's no questions or discussions at this time from the council or from any other members, I can close the public hearing. Mr. Wolf, did you have anything to add?
No, nothing to add.
Okay, so at this point, is there anything else that I would need to do for this agenda item?
You've already approved it, the increase.
Okay, so there's no other further action. There is, I yeah, there's no further action. Okay. So we'll go ahead and move to agenda item. Well, I just want to pause here for just a question, quick question here.
Yeah.
There is a suggested motion, but it's just for that. So there's no anything else. Okay. So I don't want to leave anything untied. All right, so as long as we're good there, then we will go on to the next item, which is seven on the agenda, and that's the word of the bid of the street sweeper. Is there a motion from the council?
Uh, I want the speech on the rule of the contract of regenerative air sweep equipment to pack West Machinery for ten CO six hundreds sweeper in the net amount of three oh nine nine hundred.
First from Counselor Jones and the second from Counselor Hamilton. Is there any discussion? Thank you again for the presentation from the staff last night on this. We have a first and a second. No discussion. All in favor to move the city, all in favor for the city council toward the contract of regenerative air sweet, street sweeper equipment in the half west machinery for a time CO six hundred sweeper in the net amount of three hundred nine thousand nine hundred. After created, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, number eight would be action from executive session. There is none. Nine is our city administration report.
How about a very council, the city administration report has been published to the city's website and cross-posted to our social media sites, and also emailed out to staff and the media.
Great. All right. Thank you for sharing those out there for people to view. The next item on the agenda is our ten, which is our committee report. So I know that Counselor Hamilton and I represent the urban renewal agency for the boards. County, and we attended, I think, two meetings in the last two weeks. So just kind of a quick update on that. There was some, the original meeting was called to discuss the future of the, we call ours a U R A, they call it a U R D, right? Urban renewal district, yeah. And there was some question of, well, Ben, thank you also, Counselor Slater, did come for public comment in that. There was discussion on the is the, is that your, is that urban renewal district doing what it should do, and was, would there be any benefit of dissolving it? There seemed to be a consensus of the, of the district, not unanimous at first, but that could be a really good economic tool to either solicit visit businesses, get, do some other infrastructure projects out there, and so it was in task with some of the members of that group, including the CEO of the board to come back a couple of days later about some potential projects. And, you know, we were really, the regime, the commissioner farmer was one of the people who had kind of brought it to the table, like, hey, if we dissolve this, you can get this bump of this one-time money, and then, you know, there could be some fractional increases or amounts that would get put back into your taxing districts. And, you know, I know Counselor Hamilton and I were definitely on the same page. It was like, we gotta look at like how we can use this as an economic tool to increase the tax base for all of the counties. This is the last thing that you should be doing at first, like shutting it down. And during that second presentation, the second meeting that we've had since we've seen you guys since we've had a council meeting, there was, you know, just some potential projects, and it really, I think, got everybody thinking that were, had some concerns of dissolve in it, that, hey, this is something that we could do, like, let's not be shoresighted here and you know, shut this down, but let's look at this as some long-term projects. So at this point, Counselor Hamilton, admitting that you wanted to add to this.
Just that the board did a really good presentation on potential projects and and things that we can work on out there. I was brought up to meet more often with the, with the board and the good things that it brings to the table for the community and enticing development in our biggest urban, or biggest industrial development that we have in the county. And it was talked about by everybody at the board, and I think all the board members all want to move projects forward on to that and make, make them, make it more inviting to bring in more industry. Like I had said, you know, I mean, who wants to run down that bumpy road and get to the end of it, sign a six billion dollar contract? So that's why I'm in.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time talking with some individual business owners, and, you know, U R As, urban renewal districts are used nationally to spur economic development. And most often that, I think both of us have found, and when people come to us that have questions and don't understand it, because it is hard, it is complicated to understand what you can use the money for, what you can't use the money for, how this can generate you know, more money back into, really go all of our budgets. When we ended up talking to those people, then they understand, but I always like to point out that we still to this day have a really good training that our council went through that's, I believe, still available out there on our website, and I'll ask our city manager to remind me, if somebody went to our city website and typed in.
Just northbendoregon.us slash U R A.
Slash U R A. There is a, if you really want to try to understand this, I think that is probably like the best tool, because this was a meeting for the North Bend, but it helps you understand our U R A a little bit better. So that's out there, and then I urge people to watch that and then come back. They still like, but how can this can happen or that can't? Come back, send the city manager an email or reach out to one of us, and we can give you the answers to the question instead of just sort of guess how this whole thing works. So it's, there's really good things that can be done with that, and I look forward to the next meeting. Seems to be a commitment from everybody there that, like, let's go ahead and, like, let's start really figuring out what we can do next. What was my committee report? I don't know if Counselor Slater, you were there, did anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I guess the, the only thing I would add to that, that I've been at kind of a meeting, and they mentioned that I was there as things started and put together, so they got an ad hoc history view as I went through and said, you know, here are the successes which have happened, and of course, the biggest one being Southport Lumber. And it said, but other things have been there and been whatever. And then, as I got to the end of that, I remarked, however, you know, we're at the spot where the biggest opportunities immediately in front of us, which will require some of the aspects of what this urban renewal district allows, which is railway spurs, retailing, whatever, and I appreciated what the board did on that particular thing. So that's why I said you should leave it in place, and Drew said, well, I guess I missed that. So I was really there to sort of correct the misinterpretation of what.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you. All right, well, let's go ahead then and move on to. All right, well, let's go ahead then and move on to council comments. So we'll go ahead and start down with Counselor Jenny Jones.
Well, I'm really glad, really, really glad to hear that some productive conversations have been happening with the. Decision makers for the urban renewal districts. My experience is also one of people are in decision-making positions are unaware. And because it's complex. And they get a quick presentation. There's a pullback. There's a pullback for that. And so anything that. I really appreciate you guys doing some education. I really appreciate David bringing in. The U R A training that we had a couple of years ago, that was absolutely fabulous. And I, and I hope that. You know, we can. Keep working those districts. You know, it is interesting to note that it's one of the only ways that we get sort of. Automatic money from the state because of how the school districts are reimbursed. You know, and that I think that's one of the missing pieces as well for people understanding is that, you know, yes, the U R A. Agreements take a slice out of the task districts that share a particular pool. But that when the school district is in that pool. The state will reimburse those funds. We don't have that any other way. We have to write grants. We have to leave us teams that don't, you know, don't have time to let events and are the ones required to write grants in order to get our fair share. It's just that it's a. A bit upside down, smaller your community is. So thank you for that work. And thank you for our own staffers for that work and moment. Game trying.
I guess so. Since I get to start at the beginning, I'll steal the glory of it all. You know, we don't, I've been a part of some, I guess disasters, you know, you call them, but with the incident at the airport yesterday. I don't, I mean, nobody wants that, but I mean. How could that have been set up any better than a practice stage? I mean. The North Bend Fire and Police were on scene immediately. As immediately as can be and then, you know, deal with it and then have a crane right there to get this thing in and out of the water. I mean. You couldn't, you couldn't have had a practice school do that as. What you guys had set up just happened to be lucky that the legacy is working on that and that rail bridge. So it was pretty amazing because we were sitting at work talking about it. Next thing you know, I'm showing pictures. Well, they got it the bar delivery. I mean, that's unreal because to mobilize something like that is. Yeah, that's a long time because we do that. And yeah, I just want to say you know, you're a job and way to, way to be in that community and. And to be there for everybody in a disaster like that. Yeah. Another thing I guess I got is, has been said this week at this meeting. But Sunday is a pancake feed at the fire station. Show up, honey, butter and syrup and let's go to town.
Yeah.
So that's all I have.
Pancake feed. Hey. There is a lot of things happening in the community this weekend. Friday, I'm going to Oliver. Oliver's happening at the theater, which happens this weekend, next week as well. It started last weekend. Saturday, I get to pick up my stay-at-home and rebox from the library. April twelfth and then that can date, you know, on Sunday. So again, I have to act this weekend with community things.
Yeah.
Um, so that's great. And again, our police and our fire department do a great job. And again, wake up to the. The message of having no jet in the water, like just don't, again, I'm from Illinois. We don't have that often and so watching. They solved that problem was amazing and just how fast everything happened and that everyone's. So thanks.
Well, yeah, start with that. I think Man, I want to say, a great public service community that we have responding. Our people, Coast Guard. Everybody that, that was in the area could be there and do that. And by happenstance, we had the ability to get the plane out into a spot where it could be. Just a fantastic job. It's almost like a super exercise, but you guys did well and I think our whole community did well on that. Secondly, I want to talk, we're in the midst of actually very tail end of a very fine strategic planning. Set with council and staff. The set goals for the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven period. To reflect our vision for North Bend and our mission, which is our purpose of as a city. Hope we want to accomplish as a city for you, for us and for the next generation doing on. We can find priority areas with actions which had measures of success, which is sort of interesting. That way you know you actually accomplished what you want to do as opposed to. Let us all be peaceful and let us all, you know, so good specific things came out, great discussion went on. Our guy challenger. Coach Sarah from the, you know, I think at the Cora.
Cora. Cora.
Yeah, whatever group. Excellent direction, lots of great ideas, very flexible as it goes on and challenges us for the things that we come up with. So I think that's been an excellent session and it'll have excellent resilience for our city staff and everybody makes a part of this community. We'll make progress, we can look at the progress. And, and the third part, as I mentioned, but the pancake feeds on Sunday, it's wonderful stuff. Come down, you'll meet new friends and old friends. You can actually bid and buy raffle tickets on stuff you may or may not need, but that doesn't matter. Buy tickets anyway. And if you're a family, more than five, like, you know, ten in your family, thirty bucks. I mean, how can you get around that? They'll feed you twice. So come on down and enjoy it. Church ends at noon. There's still plenty of time to come down and, and have a good time.
I think I just want to give a really big shout out to our city staff or, I mean, district team of playing has been. Really, it's been a lot and just all the effort that you put in really giving us perspective on like what is attainable and what. You're excited about and what you think that we need to focus on. You're on the ground level. So I really appreciate all the staff and their help with that. It's, it was really insightful.
Um, so if you ever hear any community members, Counselor Garbo, was there any words of wisdom or comments that you would like to add this evening?
Oh, absolutely not.
Absolutely not. Okay, right. I was just gonna say, like, if you ever get to see anybody in the community that is bored, I haven't given my number or email because. Like you guys forgot, there's still like three other things that you hadn't even mentioned. There's so many things. They, there's the art walk that this, this weekend and, you know, if you are a social media user, you can follow like the North Bend Main Street page and the City of North Bend page. There's a lot of information on there, of course. If you're not a social media user, you can follow the website. You've got the art walk this weekend. There's a groundbreaking ceremony of the North Bend. Family housing groundbreaking ceremony. This is the, you know, the first major affordable housing development. Many people refer to it as the Banger School project in forty years. So that is happening April tenth from three fifteen to five P M. Further on. People Banger School, right, I'm guessing? And so there's lots of activities that are happening. I also just want to say again, thank you to the, I think North Bend really sets the tone for how to handle emergencies in the command center. So thank you to the staff. For all of your hard work and all the roles that you play and, and the inputs that you guys gave us for the strategic plan. I think it's very helpful too. And if anybody has talked to you guys recently, this is your spring. Thank you for, thank you for volunteering for the City of North Bend. And I know all of you, you don't just volunteer here. You know, I know Counselor Jenny Jones and I've done things at the co-op over the years and. Matt's out there at doing things at the BASSA event and Mrs. Schultz is always doing extra things for, for Hillcrest and supporting community theater. Counselor Slater is at many, many different meetings, including Rotary and the Chamber of Commerce. And I just found out tonight that. Linda Torres, Counselor Torres is the women's golf coach for, great, women's golf course, coach, women's golf coach for. So thank you for volunteering, volunteering your time here and then of course for all the things that you guys do across the community. So there is another person that I want to give a little shout out to this week and many people may have know Pat Choke Pierce. Is celebrating a birthday this week and I wanted to make sure I said happy birthday to her. She was the July Jubilee coordinator back in the day when I was on the court. She was instrumental in starting the July Jubilee and many, many other things in the community, very active in working with students at the high school and scholarships. So happy birthday, Pat. All right. And congratulations to my just our, this meeting, meet, meet to see tonight. So I think that was the end of our agenda here unless there was any other business, any other businesses, anything. All right, well then we'll go ahead and say meet adjourned.